...2017, my name is Marty Aitken, I'm the chairman to my left, your right, Mr. Gavias, the vice chair, board members, Mr. O'Briens, Jim, Mr. Himmel. To my right, the clerk, Ms. Murphy, and then inspectional services behind me, Mr. Duka. If you have a cellphone or a pager, please put it on vibrate or silent. Don't interrupt the meeting with a phone call. If anyone wants to talk, please step outside. We have no microphones here, it's hot enough. If you want to speak tonight, get to the point, make it quick. We have a big, we have a big giant agenda tonight. So just get to the point, don't repeat yourself. We understand what Ben's North Pride is. If anyone's going to testify tonight, please stand and raise your right hand. If you think you might testify, if you think you might speak tonight, please stand up and raise your right hand. There's going to be four people that stink all night. If anyone's going to testify, please stand up and raise your right hand. If you don't, you will not speak. This is best.
If you swear, tell the truth, the truth, the truth to help you God.
I do.
Do I motion to waive the minutes of the reading of case 27?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I made a motion to waive the reading of the previous hearing, which was our call of this 27.
Second. On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, some more. I have a couple of six-month extensions I'd like to do. Case number 16052, six-month extension, can I have a motion please?
Does the chairman have a motion for a six-month extension?
Is it second?
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, some more. I have another six-month extension, case number 16059. Yes, could you show it, Ryan? Can I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I made a motion to grant a six-month extension.
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, some more. I have some letters here. On our whole business, case number 16086, C Street, 1269 C Street, which is Louis' Cafe. They want to move that hearing until 11:28. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, man number 16, dash, 08, 6, Street, C Street, Queens, LLC, Robert Gallagher, manager for a very tiny, the amended decision previous issued in ZJ, case number 4302, and 08015, I make a motion to continue the hearing to November 28.
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, some more. I have another letter here, case number C1748, they want to move that hearing until 10:10. That's 126 interville.
Mr. Chairman, man number 17, dash, 48, done vote for a variance of construction, two family conservation law, and premises number 126 Interville Street, I make a motion to continue the hearing until October 10.
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, some more. Case number Z1748, they have a letter here, they want to continue to 10:10.
Mr. Chairman, man number 17, dash, 49, providing interville, so I make a motion to continue the hearing until October 10.
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, some more. Does anyone here for Louis' Cafe, it's going to be November 28. Does anyone here for 126 interville and 90 interville, that's going to be heard 10:10? Oh, I have one more. Case number Z1791, they're looking to move it, it's 33 over, over road, 10:24.
Mr. Chairman, man number 17, dash, 91, Matty Holland, LLC, Robert Matty, our manager for variance constructed, 12-inch, 3-story, 11-foot, premises number 33 over road, I make a motion to continue the hearing until October 24.
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, some more. I'm going to take something here. President of council had a meeting tonight. Case number Z1790, winning suit, home, home, for variance, finding the setback requirements of street parking, there were results of such a detriment, we're not developing substantial detriment to the neighborhood, parties, President Blaine, the advocate, the representative here.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, I'm Mr. Ruck, my name is Attorney Jack Figaro. I appear this evening to behalf of the applicant. I have had opportunity this evening to speak to Council Hughes in regards to this, and based on that conversation, a request that would not go forward this evening, and I'm asking this matter to be continued until October 10.
October 10, 10:10. Counselor, I know, you could say a few words.
Yes, of course, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I just want to thank the board for being here this evening, thank, we have a great deal of neighbors in the back who are here on this particular item. I know it hasn't been discussed yet, so it's not proper to discuss it in front of the board, so I won't do that, but I want to thank the board for its dedication as always to the neighborhood, listening to the neighbors. I know there are a lot of neighborhood folks here this evening that have put together a petition in response to this particular application, and so I'm not sure, I know that the proponent is withdrawing the application this evening, or asking to withdraw, except to
No, not withdrawing, I'm asking that the hearing be continued.
The hearing be continued, okay. And I don't know of any reason on my end for it to be continued, but I know there are many neighbors who are here this evening to speak on it, and who have, as I said, worked hard over these last couple of weeks to put together a petition, if the board hears it. I know they're all here this evening, so I would urge you folks to listen to it this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thanks.
Counselor, why do you want to move this?
The reason why I'm looking to move it is, it appears there's some inconsistency in regards to what the neighbors want done. The whole reason why we decided to do this in the first place is there's an abattoir to my client's property that made some complaints to a number of different people, to the building department, to the council president, she threatened to contact the mayor in regards to being unhappy in regards to parking at this address. This illegal three-family, pre-existing non-conforming as the parking, and apparently some issues have arisen, tenants parking illegally on the lawn, parking on the street, and based on conversations that we had with the building department, they actually recommended that we proceed in this manner, come here and seek a variance, who put additional off-street parking, which in theory should alleviate problem. However, I had an opportunity to speak today to Council Hughes, and I've had an opportunity to speak to her earlier, and say I'm violation of the past laws, I understand that, and she explained to me that there are some neighbors here this evening that actually opposed to this, which is inconsistent with what we were told about the abattoir of one next door. So my, the inconsistencies between what we're being told on one hand, and what we're hearing on the other hand, I'd like to have an opportunity to speak to the folks that are opposed, we've not had an opportunity to do that, and that's why we're seeking it to work.
I'll tell you what, what I'd like to do, I'd like to hear it tonight, and then we'll make our decision on 10:10. We'll hold out the decision, if you can, you come back 10:10 and tell me what you got, or this is the way it is. But if you're going to change the plan, we're going to hear them again. So people here, you'll end up with two hearings. You all want to come back? In the back?
No.
Want to just come once?
Yes.
All right, you want to move it to 10:10, in agreement?
No.
No?
No.
Are you trying to put something together with the neighbors? Is that what this is?
I'd like to have an opportunity to speak to the neighbors that are opposed, to explain to them why we did this in the first place, I think they're probably unaware, as I said, this all resulted from a complaint from an apartment that I thought complained about the parking, which is why, which is why we're trying to put the additional squats, to alleviate the problem.
Well, I think you have plenty of time to talk to the neighbors. You knew you were coming here. You should have knocked on doors and made that appointment. I will hear the case, so I'm not going to deny you continually, so.
That's fine.
You have a call.
Again, good evening, Mr. Chairman, I'm Mr. Ruck, my name is Attorney Jack Figaro. I appear this evening to behalf of the applicant, the advocate for the board, my client's application for a variance, put in additional off-street parking at this address. The property being questioned is illegal, three-family home, the property is pre-existing, non-conforming in regards to parking, it's a investment property, it's not owned or architected. During this past year, there are some issues that have arisen, there's an abattoir next door, as indicated, made some complaints to the building department, and to the city councilor, in regards to parking at this address, complaints relative to people parking illegally at the address, parking on the lawn, or people parking overnight on President's Lane. My client, myself, we had several opportunities to speak to the building department, figure out what, if anything, could be done to alleviate this concern, and suggestion that was made, and the suggestion that went with, which was to file an application here for a variance, put additional parking in the front of the home, as indicated in the plan that we provided. With rented zoning relief, we intend immediately to do this work, put in additional parking. Obviously, it's unfortunate, the building is pre-existing, non-conforming, that's what it is, as a result of that, it doesn't conform the parking, but we're trying to alleviate concerns by doing this, and this is what, this is what was recommended. If the zoning relief is denied, the outcome of that is going to be that there's going to remain to be less squats at the property, problems may continue, obviously, my client was the best he can to draw the tenants that are there, sometimes that can be a little bit difficult, we're also not telling them to park illegally overnight in the street, or to park on the lawn. You know, we've recognized the concern of the abattoir, who was the main person that was making the complaints, and we try to be responsive to that request, you know, clients have invested money in retaining me, they've invested money to hire the engineer to draw the plan, and the chef willing to spend money to do the construction, which needs to be done, we'll do immediately, that's the whole basis for this, if there wasn't a complaint from the abattoir, you know, we wouldn't be here, and when the property existed like this for years, there hasn't been any complaints, but this is where we find ourselves this time, that's why we're here.
Why wasn't the garage cleaned out, and opened to the spots? And you get a car garage there, and I went in there and jumped this, this, you can't pull a car.
I don't disagree with you, I went to the property, usually when I retain, I like to go and look at the property so I have some idea, so I know, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Right, and knowing the spots right here, not being you.
I, I understand that, I understand your comment, off the top of my head, I can't tell the answer to that, the owners are here, but the reality is, even though two spots are empty, it's still a problem, it's still a question.
Oh, probably, it probably is.
Yeah, the zoning relief.
But I mean, you think you want to drive up President's Lane and see all pavement in the front of your house, that's, is that what you want? Is that what this city's come to?
I think what we're trying to do is satisfy the person
I understand, I understand, I really do. Over the years, things change, 46 or whenever that was granted, a three-family, till today, of course, things have changed, places have been built, probably 50 parking spaces up there. No, I just, I just don't see a client trying to help here by doing anything before a meeting, because I went back there twice, I went there and saw that, and I went back, maybe they'll do that before the meeting, and I still didn't see it done, so. That's just, it's just, I know you think you want to help, the problem that you have, I just don't see that. Any questions, the others?
Yeah, so, the plan, the plan you proposed, we keep the two-car garage there.
Correct.
Now, what if you took the two-car garage away, put two spaces off the front here, put them over there?
You'd put three spaces.
Or three spaces.
We have four.
Yes. No, I would say, this isn't two cars here.
Correct.
And you'd probably put, I don't know, I'd put here, but that would leave me, these guys.
Well, the problem is, as you know, the six or two families, by any chance, there's just one family, then there's two families over here, so if you put, why is it, you put all these cars over here, I don't think you're going to build a car block in it.
You're not going to build a car block.
Yeah, you're going to end up, you're going to walk, then you're going to have fights.
Okay, all right, so who parks it?
No one.
Right, so the school should have four spots here.
Yeah, I don't disagree with
So you got four here.
Right, I know we're trying to put here for this side, because heaven's always, obviously, if you own, put some of your cars here, you're not going to get rid of them, so we're trying to solve the problem for this side of the house, which is where two or three will sit. Now, you put seven cars here, how are you going to get a night? That's a problem.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
One question, Counselor.
Sure.
On the drawing up here, where it is a triangle-shaped piece, what is, what is this part?
Grass.
Is it grass? Where the triangle's shaped?
I don't think that's grass, I think it's, I think it's just, my memory is that there's pavement that goes on.
So is the rest going to be used this, that area as parking?
It's probably, it's probably.
Is walking around, is there something in the back?
Yeah, question on what is, what is in this?
That's, yeah, it's the grass.
That's dirt, that's dirt.
Do you have cobblestones along the side or something?
I think that that's like concrete right here, so the reason why they don't want to knock down the garage is, and this is the, that would be for two, for two Presidents' Lane, and two for their, their
Because the whole is two family on one side, and a family on the other side, so they park, these people park here, they get the car, this car, so we have two family at this side, and one family at this.
My thinking is, if you have a parking over here and along here, everyone can just go out, if you're
Just leave, just leave, because
Counselor, who's who here?
I, I want to go in there.
Okay.
And then she has to go in there.
This, this is a project, this is a tractor, and this is a family, this is a house, a project. No, I, I didn't intend to, oh, this come up.
What I'm asking is whether this triangle-shaped area can be used as parking, and this can be used as parking, making this use as parking.
If they park there, they can't go out, they can't, the car will block, so
They can't exit this way? How they answer now, or just?
They're just that.
Well, that's it. I think, I think the question that I asked, whether we put several spaces
These spaces here, the cars parked here.
Well, you couldn't, you couldn't park cars here.
No, no, you wouldn't have the triangle area to get out. You just wouldn't have the tunneling.
Get up back in it.
Yeah. Let's do it, let's get, do it on, like, almost can, one go. Anyone want to question?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor, second call?
What?
Want to speak in favor of this?
Oh.
Third call, call us by the hearing closed. Another letter here from the GPW, you, you felt preference in middle, have no comment. Anyone opposed or on the side? I heard there's a bunch, just come on up, line up, we've got a busy night tonight. Anyone that wants to speak, just come up and line up. Name and address for the record, please.
Barbara Luigi, I'm at 31233, President's Lane.
You have the floor.
I'd like this to go into the record, I have the neighbors that are against, I have some photos.
Who, who I, do you, oh, okay, then just come put them in.
These are photos that I have of the property.
Okay, yeah, well, thank you very much.
So, I'd just like to say that when this gentleman bought the house, about, I don't know, here, maybe three years now, it took him about a year and a half to rehab the house. They were here six, seven days a week, and they parked, all the contractors parked on the front lawn, so the front lawn was non-existent, and I said, okay, so maybe, maybe when they're done, they're going to do some landscaping, and it will look very nice afterwards, well, when they did, when their contractor's finished, they ended up taking out all of the shrubbery that was there, and never putting anything back down. There is, the lawn is all weeds. Kathy Nugent, I remember the day she was up there doing her final inspection, she was up and down and in and out all around the house, and she left. As soon as she left, several gentlemen started pulling the sod away from the side of that one-pad driveway.
Yep.
And long behold, somebody must have called there, because she came right back, and she told them to stop, stop pulling the sod out, that that is a parking space of one car, and you can't make it any bigger. So then they went from, so they stopped, and then they started parking three cars in that space, so there's a photo there, three cars stuffed into the one-parking pad. They have the lawn driveway, they have the two-car garage, and they have, they've already paved the backyard, so. You don't see it? There it is, okay. All right, so, the front yard is a mess, it's all weeds, they may grow to a foot before they even mow it, when they mow it, they eat the grass all over the sidewalk and on the lawn, so now the owners want to tarot with just about the whole front lawn and put in four parking spaces. I just shake my head, I can't believe it. I can't believe the city would allow this to happen. I know it's happened in North Quincy, people have said, I know it's happened in Wallaston, I can't believe now it's coming to downtown. So, I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you, there. For the record, there's 18 signatures on this opposition letter, and there's five photos, I believe, here. Name and address for the record, please.
Ryan McKim, 243 President's Lane.
Ryan, you have the floor.
Thank you. I've, Mr. Chairman, I've lived at that address for 40 years, and was a city employee for that back at the time. I commend the man, the man who bought the house, he rehabbed the whole house and really made it nice. I went down to the building department today and looked at the application and the blueprints that you have in front of you, and he said that he only has three parking places. I don't know about you, but that driveway can hold seven cars, because the family who used to live there, the lower, they would stack seven cars on that driveway. If you knock down that garage back there, you could put four more, and there's a place to the left of the garage that they do park the car, so there's plenty of parking, there's no reason to park across the front and make it look like a rooming house. That's all I
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Counselor?
Yes, thank you. Oh.
Let the counsel go first.
I understand, is the microphone on?
There is no microphone.
There is no microphone.
No, we can't afford it. You've been here for three years, three years, it'll work. Every week I give them a note.
Great, thank you, again, Kristen Hughes, Ward Five Counselor, you've heard from two residents, I know there's a petition here in front of you with 18 signatures on it, this is a difficult problem in our city, all this development, and certainly within our neighborhoods, and crouching on single-family home neighborhoods, two-family homes, this certainly is something that we are dealing with as a city, not just in Ward Five, not just on President's Lane. I think there are ways that have been discussed this evening, again, I'm not an engineer, that perhaps could give adequate parking to this particular home, I don't know about knocking down a garage, all that stuff, I don't know anything about that, I plead that, but I am not for paving the front of this driveway, this is certainly a game changer for this neighborhood, the neighborhood is vehemently opposed to this, when neighbors go out and collect signatures from other neighbors, it means something, and I know it means something to this board, and I know it means something to these neighbors, and it means something to me, and so, I don't know if you're holding your decision this evening, or going to make it on the 10th, I think the city is going to make it on the 10th, but, you know, if there are other ways to give adequate parking, again, knocking down a garage, I know I spoke with the neighbors earlier at that suggestion, they had no problem with that, but they're not okay with this, I'm not okay with this, and I have a courage to support the vote I've said, so, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Second call?
Can I make one?
You want to be here with a nice shirt, please, next time?
Um, no, I cannot.
That's not appropriate.
Next time, I might nail down when I speak, okay? But from looking at the picture here, it looks like maybe at one point, that property and the property next door might have been on one block, but, you know, you cannot get through the backyard on one side, so basically, I'm thinking of all the projects that you approved, that you have not had the setback of 13 feet, which is required in our zoning code, we have to stop giving variances, so people can get to the backyards from both sides of the houses. I mean, this, are you going to have to cut the whole curb out in front of this house?
I ain't doing that.
No, baby, is that what they're asking for, to take out the entire curb, so you can just drive off, right, I mean, that is totally ridiculous, I mean, it's basically, definitely just deny this tonight, please, thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Is there anyone else? Second call?
Good evening, my board members, hello, I'm Steve Geroch, the Pontiff Valley Survey, 95 White Street, here in the city of Quincy. I'm here this evening representing Pat Rosenberg, the Lance Bayon engineer that did the plan, and I've listened to the comments, even if we remove that garage back there, positively, you're not going to get seven spaces back there, but what we'd like to do is, maybe we'd like to continue this for about four weeks, so we can look at it, we can talk to the neighbors, see if, see if we can all strike some sort of agreement here, and make it work.
Thank you.
Cars off the street, that, that
Thank you. Anyone else, last call, call us by the hearing closed. I mean, they, they come up with some sort of deal and come back, but I'm not paying the price. President's Lane, in the city of Quincy, and you want to pay the price, which is like mad, so, I hope they come up with something, because I'm not going to go
He's a politics eleven, I wonder?
Well, we'll have to date
I'm in favor of, you know, I, I believe it's a real, real problem, because this is, the thing probably is almost like a lose-lose, because, hey, we're trying to give parking spaces, but the parking spaces are in a very other place, if we do nothing, the people, what changes, the people leave parking all over the place anyway, so we have police enforcement of over the parking, which we don't have, this is really no solution, but if they want to not put something, I certainly just
Rent the people who want that.
Boy, oh boy, this could likely, please.
I mean, look at, look at
Everybody
Look what's up, look, what's up, look, what's up, look, when we go right next to, we go right next to a, a, a train station, it's like one car each, per unit, is that right, too? I don't know, no, so, you're good, I mean, you bought the house, and you know the rules, I know, comments?
I, I agree, if we don't do anything, and he sits there and looks at this, the on-street parking of the neighbors is going to get 10 times worse, but they have to resolve, they have to come up with some sort of resolve, or at least to meet the minimum requirements of that building up there, which is five, I believe, or six.
They could, they could do something, rip down a garage, probably a four-spot back there, like in defense, each unit would have to have a piece of it, it'd have to be laid out, say, lose the two spaces, so you, because the two on the corner, you're going to have to move in and out, you're going to have to move that second car to get the, the one inside out.
And, and again, that, my contention is that something has to be done in there, because, and this isn't going to fly, and what's up there today isn't going to, isn't going to work, so, you've got to come up with a better resolve.
Yeah, I, I would like to see them use the backyard, build it better than it's being used now, utilized now, I don't know how tall this retaining wall is on the right inside, but it's two or three feet, five feet, so it goes up pretty high, but I'd like to see a reconfiguration of the space in the backyard, see if they can work something out, it may not be able to get all the spaces that we want, but I think they can improve the situation.
A lot better, right.
I knew the Lawrence family when they lived in the south, and they had a lot of people living there.
I knew the launch family when they lived in the south, and they had a lot of people living there and had quite a few cars, and they used to stack them up and it used to work pretty well. I would hate to see this lawn paved over, I agree with Mr. Chin, I think if you're gonna pave something, pave the backyard so at least you can't see it. I don't like the idea of paving front lawns, and I would not vote for this. They bought this property, they knew how many parking spaces were available when they bought it, and now they wanna change it. I disagree with it.
Thank you. Can I, let me do this, October twenty-fourth, how's that doing?
Just so I can state for the record, it's one chairman, Mr. Rosenberg, the engineer, had a family group and said, we gotta go to Ireland. That's why Mrs. Rose was kind enough to second the signal. So this is why we're asking for four weeks, she's coming back, I understand, a week or ten days, needs sufficient time to have a look at this, that's why we're asking for four weeks.
Twenty-fourth?
That's fine.
Madam number seventeen-nine-zero, Windsor, where variants find the variants of the setback in the parking of all two parties will not result substantial detriment to the neighborhood on the president's number two hundred and forty, President's Lane, and the votes that continue to carry with that, October twenty-fourth.
Second.
Motion, and on our favor. Close, no more.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further on to tonight's agenda, case number Z seventeen-twenty. Z seventeen-eighty-one, Donald Smith, with special permit, finding, using the garage as a family home in Brooklyn, all the way to thirty-one Batcock Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We plan to roam or keep it down, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Rob Fleming from Fleming and Fleming. I do represent the applicant and owner of the property, Donald Smith. Mr. Smith was here with me this evening. Also with me are the engineer for this proposal, Darren Gray, the Gray consultant, apparent. So this is, this property is thirty-one Batcock Street, in Houssneck, is a five thousand square foot lot, fifty by a hundred feet. Currently improved by a garage. This whole area stems from a plan, subdivision plan back in eighteen eighty-seven, where many of these lots were pretty identical, fifty wide by a hundred, by a hundred feet. This is one of those properties. With respect to this property and Mr. Smith, this goes back to that date. You know, from great-grandfathers to grandfathers all the way through, his mother resided at the property on Mannet. And they had used the property, which is across Batcock, for garage purposes, but also the storage of boats, you know, throughout many years. What Mr. Smith is proposing is a very reasonable single-family home for him and his wife, he's on the verge of retirement. Over the many years, as a child, summers and weekends, he used to spend in Houssneck with his grandfather, his grandparents, during those times. Who wouldn't? It's a real beachy community down in Houssneck. So again, this home is being proposed, will be in compliance with respect to all the dimensional requirements of the ordinance. You know, with respect to setbacks and height as well. This is likely smaller than many of the homes in this housing area. It's two-car garage under, as you can see from the plans, and one floor of living area, roughly eight hundred and forty square feet. So again, one-bedroom home for Mr. Smith and his wife. What we are seeking is, because it is in a floodplain coastal storm, we are seeking a special permit from this board. Mr. Smith, we have filed with conservation as well. We were hoping to receive an order of conditions a couple of weeks ago, however, they didn't have a form. We had already scheduled this particular hearing, so we decided to come here and present it to this board.
Did you say they didn't have a form?
Form, oh, form.
They didn't have a form. So we had to, so that was continued to, I think it's the fourth of October, next, next week, catch Wednesday. So we're also seeking a finding, because this non-conforming lot, it is considered, you know, a change of use. And we feel strongly, what's being proposed here, you know, will not certainly be substantially more detrimental to this, to this neighborhood. The home that's being built, again, in a floodplain, where the existing garage today is not in compliance, you know, with respect to floodplain standards today. This new home will flow through plant panels, you know, certainly a lot better than what's there today. So again, on for October fourth, conservation, and we're expecting, anticipating that an order of conditions will issue on that date. Without further ado, I'd like just to have Mr. Grady, our engineer, just present to the board as well, if you could.
I agree.
Okay, thanks.
The proposed plan is to remove the garage that sits back in this area with a thirty-six by twenty-four foot house. We are proposing a small drainage swale in the back as well. When we were in conservation the first time, we filed RDA, and the RDA was a positive determination, and they asked us to come back and give a little drainage solution. So I took a portion of the backyard, made a little swale to make an improvement. It's not a requirement of the conservation rules and regulations, but we wanted to do something, and hopefully we get through with conservation. Access to this site is through a driveway, it's not paved, it's gravel driveway, and the area underneath the house and the garage will not be paved either. So it's pretty much, we're gonna put the house on piles, elevation eight point one five, and, oh, that's the slab elevation. It'll be, elevation sixteen point six five is the top foundation. And the rest of the lot will pretty much remain the same. If you have any questions, I'll be having to answer.
I hope it's only twenty-four, can you tell, right, twenty-three something?
That's correct, yeah, a little over twenty-three.
Any questions?
I have none.
Not this time.
Thank you. Is there anyone that'd like to speak in favor? Anyone wanna speak in favor? First call? Second call? Third call closed. I want to hear from BPW, thirty-one Batcock Street, case number Z seventeen-eighty-one, we have a new project, our comments are as follows. Install a Kurgstop valve and box. The proposed cleanup for the sewer pipe should be at least have twenty-two and a half degree elbows and one forty-five degree elbow. Details can change as city, part of the plan. Upon completion of the project, add build plan showing all utilities, building foot, reference bounds, benchmarks, defining the total site facilities, right-of-way needs to be submitted along with digital file. His as-built plan shall be stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor, Tennessee River Information, this is the file. Is there anyone opposed from undersiding? Opposed from undersiding? We all got a letter here with someone important on our record.
There's only one of appeals, John Virginia Duffy and Margaret Flores. Subject is zoning board for appeals meeting tonight. We are writing in regards to the property thirty-one Batcock Street, which is in the flood zone. I would like you to know that we are not in favor, capital letters, of a house being built on this property. As it is now, houses in this area are very close, but that house in this area cannot be good with the flooding it gets. I grew up in the house next to this lot and now live up the street. And with all the newer homes built within the last thirty-five years, it seems to have altered the drainage. There has never been a house on this land, only an old garage, that's just about float when it's, when there is the flood. The last flood about two years ago, there was four feet of water across the backyard between Batcock and Stoughton Street. Unless you have lived through this, you can't understand the fear. In the blizzard of seventy-eight, I remember that, my parents were taken out of their homes, twenty-nine Batcock, by boat. My father had lived in this house for eighty-nine years and has never experienced anything like it. I feel any change to this property will not be a good decision for the city to make. I would appreciate your consideration, your consideration, he's concerned when reviewing this property, so we thank you, John Virginia Duffy, eighty-three Batcock Street. So by our side.
And anyone read this one?
The zoning board, yes, sir. It's my understanding that City of Quincy's zoning board of appeals is set to give a case of item number Z seventeen-eighty-one, the guy in the property located thirty-one Batcock Street closing. A Quincy zoning board of appeal public hearing on Tuesday, August twenty-second. Said hearing involved, sorry, said hearing involves a filing to raise the existing garage that obstructs a single-family goal of the aforementioned location. As a direct abutter of this property, I respectfully request that the City of Quincy Building Department and the City of Quincy Zoning Board of Appeals decline the deposit to build on the aforementioned location. Pursuant to the City of Quincy Zoning Board of Appeals, Section Four Dimensional Requirements, subsection one, table of dimensional requirements, under subsection one, the requirements the City of Quincy Zoning Board of Appeals requires the following. Bullet number one, minimum size area, square feet, six thousand seven hundred and fifty, minimum side yard, feet thirteen, minimum lot, lot footage, and lot width, seventy-five. It's my understanding the proposed lot meets none of these three requirements. As shown in the City of Quincy online assessment website, the total lot area of this location is only five thousand square feet. Third, as shown on proposed building plans, which I acquired from the City of Quincy's Building Department, the side yard between my property and the proposed structure is only twelve feet, and the lot footage is only fifty feet. None of these three items conform to the City of Quincy Zoning of Appeals requirements for building. For the reasons set forth above, I respectfully request that the City of Quincy's Zoning Board of Appeals, item Z seventeen-eighty-one, regarding thirty-one Batcock Street, Quincy, Massachusetts, be denied, as it does not meet the minimum dimensional requirements of the little lot. Additionally, according to second two thousand and seventeen Quincy Conservation Commission meeting, and a site walkthrough with Quincy, I'm sorry, with Conservation Commission members, John Brennan and Maureen Flynn, as well as one counselor, Margaret Flores, on August fifth, two thousand and seventeen, it's my understanding that additional concerns were to be addressed by the property owner prior to the proposed being incurred by the City of Quincy Zoning Board of Appeals. Said concerns included, but were not limited to, a review of potential flooding factors surrounding properties, as well as a review of the existing garage as an impossible existence of a removal of potential lead paint. Also, my understanding of the proposed requires an approval by the City of Quincy Conservation Commission prior to the case being heard by the City of Quincy Zoning Board of Appeals, as the property is located in a special floodplain. As the City, as the City of Quincy Conservation Commission has continued their hearing until this attempt six meeting, and considering our availability to attend it August twenty-second, City of Quincy Zoning Board of Appeals hearing in person is also related to the above, should my request decline, item being denied, I would respectfully request that item Z seventeen-eighty-one be continued to a third debate regarding Anthony Monaco, twenty-nine Batcock Street. And Anthony, if you're here. So maybe you got to read that. Are you gonna write it?
Why, why, why do you have the huts twelve feet on one side and fourteen on the other? Why wasn't that something?
Access to the stairs here, we were, we have ten five, which is a minimum setback on one side, to push this that far. The stairs need the landing coming around that way to access the house.
I mean, why would you? I just don't get it, I still don't get it. Why do you move the center of the house fifteen feet on each side, which it's supposed to have?
Well, if I may respond to that, you know, I read, I listened to the, to the neighbor's letter, you know, with respect to the dimensional requirements. One, the five thousand square feet, you know, this particular property is, you know, due to protections under forty-eight, section six. You know, the five thousand square feet, I mean, this is what we call the savings laws, to be able to build something that's by right. This existed back, as I said, when I opened in eighteen eighty-seven, you know, so it is afforded those protections to be able to build what is permitted, which is a single-family residence in a residential district. With respect to the side setbacks, under section four point three point six of the ordinance, for any lot with a width of less than seventy-five feet, you're able to deduct a foot per every five feet. You know, with a minimum of a ten-foot setback, so if you calculate that's five feet, you can take that.
Why would you do it? It's the question.
Well, I mean, the home is, the home is twenty-four feet wide.
Why would you do it? Why would you put it in the center of the lot?
It's wrong.
Put it in the center of the lot?
I believe it is in the center of the lot.
Let me answer my question, thank you.
Okay.
Is there anyone else? Opposed from undersiding?
You're gonna speak. Hi, my name is Vanessa Hialee, I grew up on thirty-six Stoughton Street, this is the street that's right behind the property, this is the property, meet us. And I'm here to express my strong position, as this, that area is extremely congested. We voiced our flooding concerns to the Conservation Committee numerous times, and it's a serious concern. I mean, I grew up there, fifteen years, and I can barely get my car out every winter when the snow piles up.
I was in the fire once though, I know that.
Exactly. And there haven't been any improvements to infrastructure for as long as I can remember. It's crumbling foundation, so to build on top of this, it's, you know, not a good idea. And right now, that whole area serves as a flood plain, so the water clears out when there's rain and snow. But if you're putting a structure there with plumbing and infrastructure and foundation inside, it's not gonna allow that flow to go out. And we're really nervous that it's really going to impact our property. My back parents interview is wrong. And, you know, I completely agree with the written statements to the, that they made.
They shouldn't have built this, it was a park. It was a match.
Yeah.
And they left years ago.
Right. I don't know who proved it.
I mean, that was like seventy, it was ridiculous, that they put those buildings on that side of the street, it was a match.
And to build on.
It's ruined the whole back of all the parks.
Yeah, and to build on top of it too, to currently keep building, it's not a good idea.
Thank you. Thank you. Name and address, sir?
Anthony Monaco, twenty-nine Batcock Street.
Stayed up last eleven minutes.
Anthony Monaco, twenty-nine Batcock Street. Thanks for, thanks for reading my letter, you did a lot better than I did.
Oh, I don't know. Sorry to kill it.
Perfect. Obviously, as I may mention, in my letter, we're strongly opposed to the proposal hearing to build on this property. Aside from the reasons that I set forth in the letter, I know that the attorney has mentioned that they use the property currently for storage. Opposed, they have the garage as the use of storage. The garage is rundown, the boats are rundown. This is not storage, it's just a junky next door to our property. There's no upkeep at the property. If there's any good thing to come from any of this, it's that somebody's finally been deploying the lot. Nobody takes care of the property. In the recent windstorm that we had, a wire was hanging down within reach across their property. As far as I'm aware, it was still there when I left my house today. That was last weekend, or last week. Further, the mention of the two-car garage being built underneath the property doesn't conform to the current existing properties in that area. Nobody, no direct abutters or anyone else nearby on the web have a two-car garage under their property. The attorney also mentioned that changing the garage to the home will make the flooding better than it is today. We've been to two Conservation Commission hearings, both times it's been continued. How you're able to say with any definitive proof that it's gonna improve without having any approval from the Conservation Commission seems to be incredibly premature and short-sighted. During a site walkthrough, we were, all parties, including the homeowner, agreed to have an independent finding done to confirm the lack of flooding that he insists this property will, how it will improve the flooding situation. At the last Conservation Commission meeting, to the best of my knowledge, they attempted to back. to backtrack on that and have refused to provide this documentation that we, all parties have previously agreed to. I think that pretty sums it up. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
My name is Glenn Spencer, other than thirty-three Babcock Street, and we probably have a side of Mr. Monaco. I don't see any sense in rehashing Mr. Monaco's letter, he said everything that I believe as well. But I would like to just touch on the fact that we did talk about the illness being on the homeowner to prove that there's not going to be any additional flood. Some sort of study can be done to show that to the neighborhood. It isn't up to us, the aboters, to, to pay for or even underwrite study. The other thing is, Mr. Fleming mentioned that from the eighteen hundreds, this has been a five thousand square foot lot, and they're covered under, their grandfathered in. I question that. Over the course of the last hundred and fifty years, I'm certain that statutes change and, and obviously with seventy-five hundred square foot requirement, that requirement would be, I would think, would be enforced as opposed, pardon me? Oh, I'm sorry, as opposed to five hundred, five thousand square feet. And I'd like that to be, to be looked at as well. But I just want you to know that we do vehemently oppose.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? A councillor?
Anyone else in the audience? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Margaret Forrest, board one councillor, two thirty-six, back on the road. Just wanted to show of hands, there's a lot of people in the audience that opted not to speak, they are here for this case, so show of hands if you have a thirty-one Babcock Street.
That's what they're going to do, they don't want to speak, they don't have to speak.
Right, they can also sign, favor, sign and close.
I don't think that's fair, I don't think that's fair, councillor.
Yeah, but they can sign and favor, sign and close, that's an option.
They can sign, they can sign up, yeah, all of that.
And so where, so where is the signing sheets?
I got one right here. I'll, I'll let them sign.
You know?
I'll let them sign.
I thought that are typical public meetings if you.
I don't let them sign.
I appreciate that. So many of them have shared with me, they've spoken with me, they're at the site visit relative to their concerns, and they are here, I just wanted you to just say, just because I only do opt-in through the microphone.
No, I was mistaken about voting no, who's in favor, I don't want.
No, 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 I just wanted you to know that there's additional audience members here this evening. I think Mr. Spencer raised a really good point, it was one of the comments that I had had, Mr. Fleming referenced some grandfathering of the square footage of the lot, but when did the subdivision occur? Because then you would lose your grandfathered status, right? So there's a subdivision, it was attached to a lot across the street, a subdivision occurred, and do we know the time of that?
I don't know.
Eighteen eighty-seven.
It's subdivided in eighteen eighty-seven.
The plan was on record, eighteen eighty-seven.
No, it was held in common ownership more recently.
That would have been nineteen ninety-eight when my mother passed away.
Thank you.
It was, it was attached to thirty-seven Babcock.
These were.
Nineteen ninety-eight, you had, I have before, it's funny. Nineteen ninety-eight, you have a subdivision that creates this non-conformity. It was not a built a lot, a building lot does not, that does not protect its place to build. In nineteen ninety-eight, it was one lot, contiguous to across the street.
Can you have, can you leave one lot across the street?
Yes, you can. How can you manage that? They own mean low water rights, they have little docks out there, this, I believe that's pretty common. So I think for him to get up here and say he's entitled, I don't believe that entitlement to be true. I believe that an action, you know, was taken that subdivided it, but that does not allow him deeded rights to build. I'm with you, Mr. Chairman, on, by all means, meet the setbacks. There's no reason to encroach the setback when you can split the difference in the middle. So I think that that's one thing to stand for. The applicant has not taken care of the property three years. I will tell you, and Mr. Chairman, I'm sure you're particularly familiar with the neighborhood, I've been out there in that recent blizzard Nemo, it's a rushing river, Babcock Street, flooding is real in that neighborhood. We look at what's going on across the country, we want to be developing every small five-foot, thousand square foot, just because your neighbors are five thousand square feet, the decisions they make back in the day, they construct those apartments, giving variances in a residence A, has impacted that neighborhood. So the decision you made to develop another piece of undersized property impacts that neighborhood. Why can't you have a yard in house next? Why is it every postage stamp of green space needs a yard, right? Why do you have, we have yards? Let's let some green space stay in the neighborhood. This neighborhood, you have an area that has chronic flooding, you have neighbors that are strongly opposed, you do not have an entitlement, probably to me, looks like it was a bad investment. You subdivided thinking you had buildable rights, you don't have buildable rights. I believe this neighborhood is going to pursue this into, into land court at this point, there's very strong opposition, they have, this is a special permit flood plain in an undersized lot, they have legitimate concerns, and I am here to make sure that they, their concerns are expressed, to make sure you're aware that I have spoken with an additional footprint of neighbors aside who are here this evening. Myself and Commissioner Aduka have had multiple conversations, multiple emails, we have spent a lot of time on this application, and here to express my opposition. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Anyone else? For councillor, give me a couple.
Okay, thank you, if I may respond. Well, first off, with respect to, you know, the protections under, under the statute here in common law, I respectfully disagree with councillor before. This lot is completely separated by a street path dark from another property that was owned by the second abbot. So this was indeed not a contiguous lot with, with a property unmened out. So it is afforded the protections under the statute as a buildable lot. The subdivision itself was well prior to, to our law here, it was back in eighteen eighty-seven. So the five thousand, it will stand, it is affordable to build on it. With respect to the chairman's comment on, you know, why is the home not in the middle? We can certainly make that work, so it's going to be thirteen on each side. Why, it was not like that, I think, as Mr. Grady pointed out, it was done in the stairs, but it still works to move it over the center of the lot, so you have a thirteen-foot setback on, on both sides. I was mistaken, you know, citing the section of the ordinance, but it is indeed doable to do thirteen feet on both sides. It's important, as this board knows, with respect to the special permit flood plain, you know, again, we're the board of the Conservation Commission, the jurisdiction is coastal storm flourish, okay? I don't think we're indicating to this board that we're going to improve the flooding that happens down this area. But this proposal will not exacerbate those conditions. You know, we feel what's there today is not in compliance, what's being built will be in compliance. Anything that's impeding the flow of the ocean is certainly going to, you know, have worse conditions down in this particular neighborhood. You know, this home is going to be built in a way in compliance, you know, with respect to the regulations. You know, it's going to have the flow-through panels, there's no living area on the first floor, you know, so I, I do think it's going to improve conditions down there for this particular property, because what's being built is going to be in compliance. And as Mr. Grady pointed out as well, at the request of conservation, just to build something in the back to maintain, again, not required to. This was a, a request, and my client, you know, going to spend the money to be able to do it, but he will do it in the rear of the property. There's somewhat of a burn in the back. But it's important for this board to understand that it's not responsible to impede the flow of the ocean, you know, when this happens. That's how flooding occurs. This home is going to allow it to flow through, you know, or go on other properties, it may, but this home is not going to have worse conditions down there, you know, and that's what we've discussed with conservation as well. You know, a site visit was done, that's why it was continued at one time, for the members to walk around the site itself.
When's the next meeting?
We're on for October sixth, next Wednesday. And, you know, certainly, I'm fine with this board issuing a decision, you know, with the condition, that in order of conditions, certainly be issued as well, and that, that's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll tell you, I want, I want to, I want to see what's going to happen on the sixth anyway, so I'd rather continue this to the tenth, if that's all right with everybody. I want to see what the conditions come back from conservation, and then we can make our decision then, whether we will build. It'll be a little more formal anyway, I think they're going to have a nice time. Yeah, motion, councillor, to make a decision on that.
Mr. Chairman, matter of Z seventeen dash eight-one, promising slip for a special permit four-point finding to change the purpose of the garage to a single-family house in a four-point overlay district. On the premises on thirty-one Babcock Street, Quincy, I make a motion to continue hearing after the Conservation Commission, and so have that meeting ten, ten, October tenth.
Second.
On motion, saying that, on favor.
Got it.
Move, come on. Let me think, we take five minutes? Make it five, five minutes.
The Conservation Commission.
Yeah, I was, I served one of the red ones.
What'd they say about that?
They said, they said, save my card, you know, first of all.
You know?
If I could have your attention please? Back to the business, case number Z seventeen eighty-four, Bishop Bishop for Vance is subdivided current fifteen thousand square feet. We are the two house lots, Body Smith Street, the after their representative here.
I'm here, board members, again, to the record, Steve DeRoche, the partner of that survey. I'm here this evening with my client, Stephen Kirsten Bishop, the owners of the property of Body Smith Street. The current lot has an existing two-family house on, the current lot is a little over thirteen thousand five hundred square feet in area, but it only has about eighty, eighty-eight feet of solid frontage. What the bishops would like to do is they'd like to subdivide this lot where they could put a new two-family house on subdivided lot, and keep the existing house also. We're proposing to put parking to the rear of the existing house to accommodate the two units. The new house will have a driveway right in front, it's open, open up for a two-pack, I mean, a garage under on each unit, so there'll be parking inside, you will have parking outside if needed. That's basically it, what we're trying to do, and that leaves, no questions in my head.
Any questions?
I have none.
No, it does not, no.
Thank you. Anyone want to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor? First call, second call? Third call, four? They have a letter here from PPW to be read that. I have a letter here from, from DPW, if you could read that, and Shell. We review this and that, the above referenced project, and our comments are as followed. One, specify how much of previous area will be increased due to development. Two, provide separate plans showing the existing site conditions, layout of utility, rating, drainage, and construction details. Three, explain how the service runoff will be discharged and treated. Four, install survey monuments to delineate the public right-of-way. The monument shall be set by a professional land surveyor. Five, provide dimensional, dimensions and grades for the paving area of all driveway entrances. Six, new sewer service cannot be connected to the main with the angle of entry of ninety degrees. Seven, identify the ownership of existing stairs or retaining wall. Probable documentation should be, uh, established with the subdivision. Eight, upon completion of the project, add new plans showing all utilities, building footprints, reference bounds and benchmarks defining the total site facilities, right-of-ways need to be submitted in the digital file. The as-built plan shall be stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor or professional engineer. Is there anyone opposed around the side? First call, step forward, state your name and address for the record, please?
I haven't heard a problem, but could you hear half a second, you said? Okay.
I need which emotion. I live in eleven five, ten, three, I don't know, it's a two-family house, I've been here for fifty-four years. The problem is parking. Parked two streets are directly opposite that lot. And they park at the end of the street, on the side of that lot. The road's like, have a high dimension, and they'll fire things up coming going up the hill. They kind of do something about the parking in front of them though, at the end of the hill. That's the biggest problem, I can say. I don't know, I haven't seen it.
Yeah, yeah, I'll show you, I'll show you. This is what it's doing, the most part back here.
Behind?
Yeah.
Behind, if I can see the fire, if I can.
Yes.
If I can get in there.
On the way.
I'm going to go fire it. I've got a fire for the wall behind it.
Yeah, no.
There, there, I've been behind that, right? The roof is, uh, behind the house. But you can't get into, uh, because of the wall.
Not walls, I think.
Remember, the way the property, yeah. That's the street. You have to go, you know, and, and no one. The roof of the wall, basically, I see it before.
I'm also right, we're here.
That's Broad Street, right?
Yeah.
And not Broad Street.
So they come in here, and they get their turn.
Well, why do you keep the cars off the street, isn't that how?
Right, right. I won't park now, here, so I'm in there.
Guys, amazing, it's a serious thing. There's a large record of lives in the area. Four acts of truck, it's like a bus.
Where's he live?
It's a Boston truck.
Where's, where's he live?
It's in the, it's in the street, no time to make room for him.
Is it city Boston truck?
No. It's a large city bus, I mean, I thought city bus, it's, 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 it's a, who's the Zen bus?
Oh, okay, okay.
And it's enormous, sometimes they park right at the end of the street. Right, just right here, there's the whole street, that's a short, you know, is it parked, is it driveway? Well, see, it's a parking, I'm, I'm, yeah.
Two-pack.
See, it's a parking, I'm more concerned about, because
I get forced to back, back in the house.
They park in the back, you can't hit the hill, because when you go, when you turn it down, this street, it's one way, it's going downhill, you know? You try to take a right-hand turn when you're going downhill, and I mean, it's so nice. You don't go right, you go straight, and it's, huh?
Go sideways.
No, well, it's so bad a time, then I probably.
Yeah, so then, you get forced to back.
No, for the using.
Or they're going to eat.
And that's for four hundred two?
Yeah.
Well, that's the case, it'll be okay, I don't know if I can even get in there.
Go get in there.
He's good, thank you.
Thank you.
Will I cancel the speaker? Oh, that's the plan, yeah, right?
Yeah. Is there anyone else? Opposed around the side, second call, third call, all the side are giving close. Are you, uh, I'd like to, you're parking that.
I would probably do the best, you know, the door.
Who can you vote in favor?
Be voting in favor too, Mr. Chairman.
Likewise. Some questions, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Would it be a blasting, as well? Would you be blasted, involved to get, uh, your spaces? I'm sorry? Blasting?
Yes, there will be blasting, but it'll be obviously done under the auspices of the, you know, yeah.
And they have to take a survey of the home, and then?
Yeah, I'm okay, I'm okay.
I'm in favor, big one.
Mr. Chairman, madam, this is Z seventeen dash eighty-four, Christian Bishop for a variance, is subdivided, the current thirteen thousand five hundred square foot wide, it's a two-housewives, the premises number four is Smith's, please give a motion to grant the variance. Second?
Second.
On the motion, stand there, no in favor?
Aye.
Close, so move. And then who visits, case number Z seventeen eighty-five, Andy B. Doe for finding to construct a second level on the existing structure, the premise number two twenty-five Mubry Ave, the African representative here.
Uh, good evening, board, I am Sammy, owner of two twenty-five Mubry Ave. I'm here tonight to report finding for, to build a one bedroom on the second floor over the, uh, over the existing structure on the first floor. The reason why is that I have a gold family, and I need one more extra bedroom to, uh...
So you're staying in the footprint of the home, you're just going down?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just going on one bedroom, so, uh, I had a, I had a committee meeting with, uh, help, our counselor, uh, Bill Harris, and that's all our positions. So I just wanted to ask you tonight to, uh, grant a permit, so I can move forward with my project.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have none.
No, that's not, that's.
Is anyone want to speak in favor? First call, second call. You can have a seat. Third call. Call of the side of the hearing, oh, I got one here, this is, uh, this is from, uh, Counselor Harris, and it's a letter for two twenty-five Mubry Street, question finding, and he's in favor. And a letter here from the, uh, DPW, says you reviewed the above-uplifted project and have no comments. Anyone opposed around the side? Opposed around the side, first call, second call, third call, close. Probably voting in favor, you're staying in the footprint of that, but?
Yeah, I think that's pretty good.
Yep, likewise. In favor.
Is there one? Chairman, it's, uh, madam seventeen dash eighty-five, Andy B. Doe for a finding to construct a second level over the existing structure on the premise number two twenty-five Mubry Ave, let the motion to grant finding.
The second.
On the motion? Stand there, no in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, don't move. Case number Z seventeen eighty-six. E two for finding, constructing a single-family home that is not substantially more detrimental than existing home on the premise number three forty-two Quarries, is the African representative here.
Hi.
How are you?
My name is Nick Chu, the owner of, uh, three forty-two Quarries Street. Um, I'm here tonight to, uh, for a finding, uh, if you're going to put a, uh, new single house, um, on, uh, my property, and, uh, the reason that I'm here today at night, because, uh, we are, we'd be, we would be in, living in an existing house during the construction, and, uh, we will, we must be, uh, the ha, the, uh, the existing house after the new house comes in.
You're going to rip the house down, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And the new house, uh, fulfill all the requirement of the city setback, and, uh, we're going to keep the same parking lot, and then we still have to go around, so I think, uh, it's going to be the same, uh, fulfill the, uh, requirement.
Any questions in the afternoon? The garage, you're going to stay there?
I go out cash.
Yes, yes, my garage, it'll be.
And then you're just going to rip down the house out?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? First call, second call. Third call, close. They will let me, you want to speak in favor? Yeah. It's like an auction, you know, you got to move. Oh.
It must be a hearing, right?
Yeah.
The eyes must not be there either.
No, the eyes aren't good, that's.
Uh, Dave Jacobs, the lady down at Court. Uh, I own the property on the corner of that street, uh, he lives on Quarry, but I'm down at Court. We've owned that house, uh, my family, for about forty years. Uh, they moved in a couple of years ago, the house before that was vacant for a while. Um, they've made a lot of upgrades, you know, to the property around it, the garage, they've reconfigured it, they've done some work there. Uh, I know two personally, he's been a great neighbor, I see him out there with a snow blower all the time, when I'm snow blowing too. Um, the only thing I, I might say is that, you know, um, just maybe have like a, a date in mind for when the new house is constructed, the timetable for when the old house is going to be coming down, you know? I've seen issues where something to say out that, that's not necessarily supposed to say out. And also, um, when the new side yard is, is now open, um, I don't know what they, they plan to put any fencing, but, um, just in the area, in that general area, we don't have chain like fence, I don't know if that's something you guys can look at, that's something, I can talk to him, him about that, too, but, I'm just, I'm in favor of the project, and, uh, I think it'd be great for him, but, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Good evening to the board. Um, push and alert up at twelve Dance Court, um, immediate neighbor to Mr. Chu on the back of his house. Um, I congratulate the family on building the new house and having two great plans, I think it's going to be view defined to the area. My concern is, as, um, uh, the neighbors' concern was the fact that there will be two houses on the property, so I guess as long as the plan is for Mr. Chu to remove the old house as soon as the construction is done, I know that was done before they move it, or?
If you guys are not in agreement, you can pull demolition permit.
So, it's going to be built into the agreement and, um, proposal, so I think otherwise it's great, and, um, yeah, a nice fence on the corner would be also appreciated, and maybe Mr. Chu would consider, um, planning some traps sort of on our, on the property line, just to replenish what is aging in our neighborhood. Other than that, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, to the board.
Is there anyone else want to speak in favor? What kind of fence you putting up?
Uh, pretty, uh, Bible fence.
Nice shrubs? There you go. Uh, I got a letter here from the DPW. We review this, uh, middle for the above referenced project, and this is one, uh, comments are as followed. One, specify how much of previous area will be increased due to development. Two, provide dimensions and grades for the paving areas of all driveway entrances. On completion of the project, as-built plans show all utilities, building footprints, reference bounds and benchmarks defining the total site, facilities and right-of-ways need to be submitted along with a digital file. The as-built plan shall be stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor or professional engineer.
Thank you.
Is there anyone opposed around the side? Opposed around the side, first call, second call, third call, close. And we just put it in there when we, uh, when he gets his occupancy permit, he has to pull the demolition permit, take that out, it's not going to be ninety days.
Yeah. Better one, eighty-six.
We all said, any comments?
No, I'll say.
Madam seventeen dash eighty-six, the, two for a finding to construct a single-family home, and that is thus a family more detrimental than existing home, the premise number three forty-two Quarries, including, make a motion to grant the finding, uh, but that, um, uh, upon, upon getting a pay occupancy, uh, he must pull the demolition permit, he has ninety days to definitely exist the house of the property.
Second?
Second.
On the motion, stand there, no in favor?
Aye.
Close, so move. Thank you. Case number Z seventeen eighty-seven, all terms for Vance to construct an addition, premise number eleven Andrews Road, the African representative here.
Yes. Uh, Paul Kearns, eleven Andrews Road.
Get the floor, sir.
Um, I'm applying tonight for a, um, zoning relief for a one se, one side of my property, uh, setback, and a portion of the rear setback. I'm looking to put on an addition to accommodate my aging parents. It's pretty soon, they both have medical conditions that soon require more help than they can provide on their own. I obviously want to be the one to help them through this, and this addition will, uh, allow my family to provide them the help to do that.
The way this is written, it's, it's zoned and A, and it's, it's, it's really not an addition, it's a separate house that you're putting on, that lot, so.
I.
Two years from now, you sell a house, five years from now, you sell a house, someone's got a two-family on that property.
Uh, well, I did a little research, and I was told if I had an opening common wall, as you can see on the plans, it wouldn't be considered an inclusion.
But then you go on like five, five feet from the lot line on that side of the house.
Yeah, that's what I'm applying for.
Right, but it's, it's like, why not put an addition in the back to the house?
Because that, that would come into, that would take all of our, our light, the way the house is, the way my neighborhood is, the sun is in the rear yard, sunrise, the sunset, that would take our kitchen windows, my living room windows, uh, we would basically have, it's the old sun that come in the back of the house.
It's just, uh, just. This is really the first time I've seen some, like, it's like, it's almost two houses, it's, it's like, it's like you're putting a ranch on, on a backyard property. It's, you know, it's just, it's not zoned for that, I don't know, I don't know, let's see where we go with it, it means. Any question now? Uh, not this time. Go on.
Uh, no questions at this minute, but a lot of doubt. Is, is that the only reason? Uh, did you, did you, um, state all the reasons why you needed the variance? I heard it's signed in the backyard and such, what, are there any other reasons? To put it off the back of the house?
Yeah.
No?
Yeah.
For off the back? Well, that's where my kitchen, in my, I have a half bath there.
Okay.
So that would just be more work, that would be demoing my kitchen, my bathroom, we'd have to come up with a whole new reconstruction of half my first floor. So I thought if I was putting it off to the side, that would eliminate all that.
You can have a seat. Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor? First call, second call. Third call, close. I was wanting. DPW wrote a letter that they have no comment, is there anyone opposed around the side of here? First call, second call. Third call, close. I just, uh, I got, I got a problem. How do you do that? How do you do that for the neighborhood? Uh, it's, uh, it's just, very tricky. And it's like, why couldn't I come off the side of that house, like that lot line, lock that lot line?
Can I comment on that?
We'll get to you, and then. I mean, you gotta take away, that's what you gotta do when you're building a, an addition on a home, you can't have two separate houses, it's like, this is, I mean, people tried that, but it was put through a few times, and it's like, you can't, it's not for the neighborhood. It's not him, and I know why he needs it.
Right.
And it's a great piece, but you want to say when the parents die, you rip it down, just, what do you do?
What do we do?
Uh, I'll, I'll just report to the board that, uh, the African dick came to my office and tried to find some common ground, um, that's not. tried to find some common ground, that's not what we, that was not what I had in mind, and this is what we have today, as far as open common.
So there's two feet or whatever to a doorway or something, that's it?
Yeah, I mean, as the board knows, you know, we have guidelines about open common, that was a different idea than I, than I had, as far as open common. But, I mean, it's almost like you have two residences, not a single-family residence.
They're lots. And, and it's not one, it's heating, it's the next people. You've got a problem, you have a problem in the city.
We try to avoid the three-foot door, the, just one opening, more of both cohabitation together, in a way that they can still have privacy, but you've still gotta come into the house. And that's been my consistent guideline for many years.
That you walk through when you go into the other home, you'll still have privacy, right? Open and common. Any comments, guys? Come on, there's something.
I think it's, I, I think very easily it could be turned into an independent unit. Everything's there for that to happen.
Oh, no, it's just one little.
And. I, I, I think if we let it go as planned, then we're gonna have ten more of them in that neighborhood coming in the same way. Cause they're all similar about that.
Yeah, you need an architect to come up with something better than that, but to make it even look nice to the neighborhood. You know, it's like a house on house, a house, you know what I mean? And it's tough, I know, you want the house to look, you wanna help, you wanna make this right.
So, can I speak?
Yeah.
So, we're, this kinda came up suddenly with my parents' medical conditions. I threw this together, trying to get it in for the September twelve meeting, didn't know that it was gonna be postponed. We're open to whatever you guys suggest. Like, I don't have to do it like that, I can do whatever you guys tell me. I'll make that open in ten feet if you want it.
Yeah.
What if, if he makes it a little bit spore, will it be a little more closer?
What do you mean?
Well, safety, I don't know, just, the, the study, for example. Get rid of the study and maybe you can bring, bring the whole thing in so it's not so close to the neighbors.
Come off the rear?
Yeah.
Lock that side, yeah, the rear, and then the side, and even the back, that's, that's what it is, I mean, I understand, but come back over, and it's kinda, it's gonna, you know, it is, is living room, dining room.
I stepped it off the way the code is, thirteen and twenty, and it's, it wouldn't even be worth it for me to do it for them, it'd be a hallway, that's why.
We get that, we, we get that, you wanna put an addition in the back of your house, but.
I mean, we can eliminate.
Can we suggest to work with Mr. Duke and try to come up with something a little?
Yeah, absolutely.
See if we can't come up with something to make this work. Uh, what do you need, a month?
No, I'd do it as quick as I can.
Ten, ten?
They're out of their house next week.
Ten, ten, they're moving in?
No, they're living with my sister, so this gets done. She's in another town, they wanna stay in Quincy.
Right, so you want it ten, ten?
Yeah, that's.
It's next available.
That's the next available, we gotta be agenda, we'll put it on. Why don't we do that, let, let Mr. Duke and try to come up with something, make this work.
Yeah.
And I understand, he doesn't wanna get it done and just do us.
They have to go somewhere.
Maybe we can talk to the, you know what, like a, like a two-family when the mother-in-law died, and that, she was dying, she was living there, and then we had a chained back door, that's the way first people are in those cases. Yeah, and we.
Can you put that in, right, like?
We gotta re-put, it's, it's the way the house was, independent living, was till my dad, your last one.
And then rip out, rip out a kitchen, rip the kitchen out, or?
Yeah, it was like, yeah.
Can I do that?
With you?
Well, that's what, you gotta, you gotta bring this over.
If you could work with him on that and what we would need to put in our.
Try to bring this over, away from the side, stuff that down.
Yeah, my intent was to try to keep it as a one-family.
Right.
Although, make it an independent unit, and, and it's always a problem.
Get that bigger walls, and I know it's gonna stick to them, but down the road, that could be as big giant kitchen and everything else on the other end. Really, this kitchen dining room could move in there, and you could put another big study in the middle and all that.
We can get together right away, I, I would caution the board the, the blurb of the condition that something be removed or discontinued after.
No, I know, that doesn't work.
It's unenforceable, I, I got three of them in the city now, it's not gonna happen.
Well, we did in that one lady's house.
I'll sign it.
And we took out the staircase, we had a staircase to put back in. Two houses.
Well, I'll do whatever the board.
No, I know, I just. But it was in the same house, we just put some walls up and ended up taking them down. Hi, cram a motion, what was the ten, ten, and consider Mr. Duke and trying to move the house over, and look at the plans down the road, what you could do with that as far as.
Okay, madam seventeen dash eight seven, Paul Kearns for a variance in addition to purposes number eleven, Andrew Road, Quincy, I make a motion to continue to hear at ten, ten, I'll call the ten.
Second.
On the motion, CNN on favor?
Aye.
Close.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have it.
This one?
Yeah.
For the man on tonight's agenda, I apologize from the beginning. Juan Lynn for variance to construct a single-family dwelling in an old form of law in terms of eighty-five Elliot, is the African representative here?
Could any young board members, again, for the record, Steve Rose, professional survey. I'm normally here representing the owners, Ms. Juan Lynn, but I'm also representing my associate, Pat Rosenberg, who prepared the plan, document them as a professional engineer, professional land surveyor. He's definitely come before the board and can speak on the, on the other side. My client would like to construct a new single-family house from a previously, a previous lot, a lot that was in existence for quite a while and had been combined by the assessment office way back when. The current, the current parcel itself is like ten thousand eight hundred and eighty square feet, along with one other lot in that block, it's the biggest parcel there. Most of the lots there are at the fifty-four hundred and forty square feet, all containing single-family homes. Yes, there is a couple of clues we're looking for, the first is a reduced frontage, supposed to be eighty-five feet, we're looking to say, we're looking for a forty-five point three-foot frontage, and the side yard setback, it's supposed to be thirteen feet, we do have that on one side, we're leaving the side at seven point eight feet. And again, the parcel we're creating, we're reusing it, you know, is fifty-four hundred and forty square feet. I do have a copy of the assessment map, if anybody would like to take a look at it to see the proximity, oh, you got a copy there, okay. And again, it's going to be a single-family house, there's gonna be parking under the house for one car, and there'll be a parking, tandem parking space outside, but there'll be another parking space next to it, so it'll be parking for three cars.
So you want to pay half the, half the front of houses?
Uh, yeah, probably wind up being about twenty-one feet by twenty-five feet or so.
Twenty-six, twenty-one by twenty-six extra.
Twenty-one, twenty-six.
Yeah, yeah. Why, why are we building a house here fifty-two feet long?
That's the design of the, of the children.
You know, people wanna step inside their lot.
I think it pretty much fits in all, and with, you know, all the other houses there.
Any questions?
This existing, that's the neighbor's garage. Sorry, that garage, that must be the. That's the neighbor's.
Any questions?
No, I have no questions.
No. Thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? Speak in favor, first call, second call, third call, close. A letter here from the DPW?
Ah.
There it is.
Sorry. Review this middle for the above reference project and comments are as follows. Specify how much of previous area will be increased due to this development. Two, provide questions on the existing site conditions, layout, utility, grade, drainage, angle of construction details. Three, explain how the surface runoff will be discharged from treatment. Four, install survey monuments to delineate the public right-of-way, the monuments shall be set by a professional land surveyor. Five, provide dimensions and grades for the paving area at all driveway entrances. Six, upon completion of the project, as-built plans show all utilities, building footprints, reference bounds and benchmarks, finding the total site facilities and right-of-way need to be submitted along with a digital file. The as-built plans must be stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor or a professional engineer.
Is there anyone opposed on the side? Can we step forward, state name and address for record? Why don't you all line right up right here, so we can take one at a time? All right, you first. Yeah, why don't you all line right up over here, so we can just continually keep going. Name and address for record, please.
Linda DeMasega, now, my mom's at ninety Elliot Avenue across the street. I grew up in that house. I don't live there anymore, I lived, you know, down the street, but I'm concerned about the, you know, property. That was cow pasture mostly way back, and that was probably one of the older houses that is there now, and it had a larger lot, the people that were there before had it for dogs, people there before them, I remember, had kids, but, you know, there's a retaining wall, that's fieldstone, have you seen it? It was old when I was a kid. We used to like poke sticks in it and watch things come out of it, and that, that's old, okay? So, I know there's a house below, I mean, it's, it's a looming piece of property. There's a house below them at thirty-three Amesbury, I don't know if the thirty-three Amesbury folks are here. We always used to stand there and say, oh my God, when's that gonna fall over? What are they doing with the retain wall? They have plans for that, or are they bringing that down level and gonna have the retain wall in the back?
That's staying there, right?
Yeah.
Stay.
Fieldstone retain wall, oh boy. Did you, have you seen it? You'd really have to have a look down.
Just give us your comments, you spent a long night today.
Three cars, a separate house, is this a for-profit venture, we're gonna split it and sell it? Is it a family, you know, for family? I, you know, we're definitely, I think most of the neighbors are opposed to it because this just seems to be happening everywhere in Quincy. There's a, oh, you got a nice side yard, let's, let's see what we can do. I bought a house on Channing Street, they told me there wasn't enough frontage behind me to split it up, you know, now that can change, you know, it's, it's an issue, so see what someone else has to say.
Thank you.
Next, the Henrys.
The master, thank you.
Hi, I'm Shirley Henry, and I, this is my son, Killa, and we live at eighty-four Elliot Avenue, right across the street from eighty-five, and I am closing, the house being put up, because I think it's gonna be an eyesore, and just figuring to the neighborhood between the house on the corner and number eighty-five, it's just gonna look like it's just jammed right in there. To build on that lot, you'd have to access through the retaining wall, which has stood there, as one has said, for many years, a hundred years, which is how back to earth, and the sidewalk would have to be ripped up the curb, the street because of the gas lines, and I'm really concerned because my driveway faces that retaining wall, and if that's taken down after all those hundred years, all the mud, I'll have a deluge of mud and water coming down my driveway, which goes downhill, and I'm sure that my cellar will be flooded. I wrote it down so I could say it quickly. The properties are very high ground, and my house is on very low ground, and anything that comes down off of that hill is gonna end up at the bottom of my driveway. And also, I didn't know if I should mention, I wanted to know if Mr. Lynn was a builder, and would building material and trucks be stored on the property, or does he have a commercial spot that works out of? It's a very quiet residential neighborhood, and it's just gonna be chaos if all this is going on for a year or two, and it's just never gonna be the same neighborhood that we've had all these years. Also, I was concerned because the property was bought a year ago, and in that year, the lawn has never been cut, the hedges have never been attended to, and the grass is so thick, it's growing in the gutter, and in the summer, we get four-feet-high weeds in that grass part. I know it's not a mandate that the neighbors cut that part of the grass, but as respect for other people's.
For the neighborhood, you clean it up.
Everybody does it, and the street is neat and clean, and it looks so shabby, and so I'm concerned if that, you know, property isn't taken care of, because it makes that property look bad. So, building on that lot is gonna change our lives for the worst. It's a lovely neighborhood, and I would just like it to stay that way.
Thank you. Name and address for the record, please, next. Are you all together?
Yeah.
Okay.
My name is Shayna, and she is at home, and.
What's your address?
Thirty-one, here's, twenty-first Street.
Again?
Thirty-one, and special.
Thirty-one, okay.
All right, so we're also a new property being built because of our, like, sharing convenience to the rest, to the families. We have like, like, some, and then two alloyes, and some, a lot of noise, and the new property is separated from, it's like the back of the lawn, and it's like less than eight, so.
Relation construction is not a good reason, is there anything else?
It's like really close to our backyard.
Okay.
Which is like, it's like, the property is so long and narrow.
Okay.
Sometimes you're like, you know.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
My name is Gina Fennale, and on the street of seventy-eight Old Road, it's right behind the house, so the reason that I'm opposing, because the construction will cause a lot of noise in the neighborhood, and I'm right now nine months pregnant, so I'm about to have my babies in November, early November, so this will affect my family a lot with the construction, so that's the reason I am opposing this.
Thank you.
Hello. Well, I'm, I'm born from one-seventy Old Road Road, and this is my husband, Jerry, I won, just for the, opposing for the similar reasons, the build, the lot is very, very tiny, and it will definitely affect the aesthetics of the area, it does not fit the conformity of the buildings, so it's. It does not fit the conformity of the buildings, so it's definitely would affect how things look in the area, and will affect the property value, I think. In addition, it will increase the noise and traffic area. So, we are looking at the right corner from that block, so.
I think I do have a question. Is it gonna be residential or is it for tenants?
Residential.
Well, we said residential. Is it rental?
Single family.
Single family rental?
It'd be single family home.
Because there's already a house there, and they'll be building something, this small lot. So.
A house.
A house, okay.
Residential, a house.
It could be rent or it could be a whole lot.
It could rest, because it does make a difference, that's all.
Yeah, but you don't know.
But half of the time.
Not for zoning. Someone owns it, what they do, it's up to them.
So, my wife knew that case.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Second call.
John, order fail, 62 Grand Mall Road. Question, how much is the frontage on that lot?
Forty-five.
Forty-five feet? And what's the square footage of the lot?
Fifty-seven hundred.
And what's the square footage of the house they're asking you to build?
Thousand, twenty-four.
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two by twenty.
So, single family.
One hundred.
Single family residential, a zoning code is seventy-five feet?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five feet, okay, so.
But you know, John, all the rest of the houses are just the same size lots.
It really isn't. That's a non-conforming lot that's up on the hill there, that, you know, obviously, that, you know, I grew up in that neighborhood, and this sounds a lot like what's happening in Montclair, is spreading from the other parts of the city. I mean, this is, sounds a little bit like the Bat Park case.
It's going everywhere.
But when you look at this, look at the houses that are on Amesbury. Okay, that's gonna cast a giant shadow on the back of those houses and stuff. When they built all these places, some lot lines are on the left, some are on the right, and they were meant to have open space. We cannot get rid of every square foot of open space in the city of Quincy, just because there is open space. So, if they, if they need all variances, and they don't need a variance, build the house. If they need a variance, then please deny this variance.
And if they need a variance, they wouldn't be here.
They would not be here, but, you know, thank you very much.
Next.
89 Elliott Avenue, my name is Henry Danino. I oppose it because watching them construct their, remodeling their existing home, it looks like a dump. They just took everything out of their demolition work and just dumped it in the backyard. They never cleaned anything up. I know, I know it's their land, I know it's their property, but have some respect for the neighbors, you know? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn, I appreciate that.
And another thing, they should just take care of their yacht. It looks like a jungle up there, you know?
Thank you.
The neighbors are all pitching in to keep the area clean, the streets, the sidewalks, and it's been empty for about a year, and no care at all.
Go ahead, I'm ready for questions.
Ward counselor came. They told me he was out of, out of the city, out of town.
They have no idea.
Yeah, I, the letter came out, and I saw my mom was away for, for the summer, and I bring her mail, and the letter that they got just came out on the, was postmarked on the 12th. And I think Shirley got it on the 13th. So, we haven't had a real lot of time, hasn't, haven't even seen a, you know, real plan or anything, you know?
What letter? This letter to come here?
To tell, to tell us about the, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, you know, like, ooh, you know, something, to get in touch with your counselor, right? Called a couple of days ago, and he's out of the country. Not that he's gonna, you know, we'll leave back us off, I, you know? I haven't had good experience.
You should know that.
Yeah, you know.
Problems.
I got problems with the transportation and my fifty-four hundred dollar tax really Quincy right now, but I don't know how long I'm gonna stay. I feel like I'm getting crowded out, you know? So.
Is there anyone else? Opposing on the side, second call, third call, closed. Doesn't even matter.
No.
I don't think there was, because the counselor, she tried to call him, and he wasn't around, so I don't think there was any. You didn't meet the counselor and have a neighbor with you, right? No. You know what, I went up and looked at that property a couple times. It was, it was interesting. It was interesting. Interest in the build, you know what, but it's nice to have a nice yacht. And you know what, I'm gonna make sure with my vote that he keeps his nice yacht, so I'm gonna be voting against it.
Let me bring this to you, but I, this is my neck of the woods, I live on Pope Street, and I understand that people are trying to keep that place as nice as, the valley, as I call it. It's, it's, it's not the right place to work for that project.
Which way is it?
Can we let Mr. Hill vote before I vote? There you go.
I'll be voting against it, I don't like to reward poor behavior with a, a gift.
I looked at the lot, and it's interesting, because it's like two different lots almost.
It is, it really is.
Long and middle. It almost looks like there's supposed to be a house there.
It really, the way it's like laid up.
But, but I understand the sentiment of the neighbors, and I was in the opposition and the reasons why, so I'm gonna be voting against it.
Board members, may we ask for a withdrawal?
Withdrawal, no prejudice. Just to give us a chance to go back and take a look, and maybe not.
It's gonna be a completely different project.
Absolutely.
That, that, I'm hoping that. You okay with that, guys?
Yeah.
Round of seventeen eighty-eight. One, then for a variance, it's from a single family going, and not performing law, the terms of that, eighty-five million there, just make a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Second.
On the motion, stand down, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No more.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Pause the year.
Oh, no, no, we're torn.
Right. It's amazing.
I think it is, it is.
It's just amazing.
C-1789. Gower, quote, for variance planning to change use from an office, with attached warehouse, we show them attached warehouse, wholesale and retail sales on 77 Federal Street. Counselor! Come on, thank you. Why you don't got?
That's okay.
I told you.
It's educational.
It is. It is.
Never watch enough of this. Good evening again. For the record, my name is Terry Jackery Gilgram. I'm the advocate, Mr. Chairman, our members. My client is seeking a special permit.
Whoa, whoa, there's hearing going on here, we can't hear. I'm sorry, please go outside, sorry. Sorry, contract.
That's fine. My, my client is seeking a special permit this evening to operate retail and showroom industrial area zone. The last use of property was office with attached warehouse. We're proposing to change that to showroom warehouse. The proposal is, my client's gonna be selling kitchen cabinets. There'll be no manufacturing done in the premises, kitchen cabinets. We manufacture and chatter, and they're gonna be shipped here by container, and then they're gonna be, they're gonna be shipped here. Yeah, they're gonna be shipped here.
Have you ever listened to Trump say, we need to build stuff here? Shipped here from China.
Well, in any.
Really?
Well, any event, the point is, there's gonna be no manufacturing.
We didn't buy a pair of socks today, we got hundreds of them.
There's gonna be no manufacturing done in the premises. My client's gonna be aiming to sell a contractor, she's gonna be aiming to sell a home improvement store such as Lowe's or Home Depot. But the reality is, if I walk in, I wanna buy a kitchen cabinet, it's not gonna throw me out the door. So, I've had several chats with Mr. Duca in regards to this, while wholesale is allowed in his own, in abundance of car for not giving violation of zone, and we thought it'd be good to come here and.
It's a nice, it's a nice street, it's a nice street, where you can get kids down there.
So, that, that's nature of our request. I had an opportunity to speak to Counselor Kamuchi, who told me he's got no view, neither way. He said that maybe one of the neighbors had maybe come to oppose it. I asked him if he knew why they'd be opposing it. I know that there was an issue a year ago. Apparently, there was some demolition work done in the property without permit. Industrial services issued stop work, or I was not involved at that time. Obviously, I don't condone that, I'm not sure how that came to be, but once that happened, this gentleman was referred to me, and I do think he's done the right thing since. I know that subsequently, an application was made to the Building Department, for General Listen Permit, and General Listen Permit did issue, that we saw a bad issue, and he did seek my counsel in regards to doing what is correct in regards to zone, which is why we're here this evening. We asked him if you look favorably in the application.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call, closed. Anyone here from DPW, review the above project, and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed from on the side? State name and address for the record, please.
I'm Fu Cal, 112 Federal Avenue, Elliott Avenue, Broad Street, on the premise. I've been a longtime resident of Quincy, generally, and supporting the idea of doing more business to the city. But being, you know, in the area for over two decades, I have been myself, you know, been in front of this more so many times. What I wanna say is that, you know, that I understand that, you know, a showroom gonna be making business over there. To my understanding, Mr. Wu raised in Manchester, New Hampshire, under the name of Spa Push Distributor LLC, is a company that arrange for freight and transportation. So, I'm wondering that, you know, what kind of merchandise the showroom gonna showcase? If it is as a, you know, as Jen mentioned, that's gonna be only kitchen cabinet, I don't think I'm gonna have any objection about that.
Okay.
But I would like to know for certain that, you know, what kind of operation gonna be? And what is the certainty of, you know, that is the only type of merchandise gonna showcase over there?
Yeah.
And, and if it is, case, and you know, I would like to know, that you know, if it is, it's gonna be operating a certain normal business out, or it's gonna be, you know, extending to weekend, or, or, or after five, and so on. As you may know, that, you know, that Federal Avenue, that section is increasingly, you know, with all the problems, is a heavily covered. And everyone, everyone tries to control, you know, that, you know, try to control to, to water the street or the other direction. And then the premises, they just already have a four tiny pockets locked right in front of that, you know, I really don't wanna be more victimized by all of it, so. From the get-go, since the new owner came, that, you know, the building, several months ago.
You said it's in a transportation business?
Yeah, it is under the name of the, if I'm not mistaken, Spa Push Distributor LLC.
I have no knowledge of that, oh, yeah. And I like to represent what I've been talking about my client, which is actually gonna be kitchen cabinets. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
So, I just wanna, you know, respectfully request that if the board is gonna grant a special permit, we ensure that, you know, that gonna be.
Kitchen cabinets.
Kitchen cabinets gonna be showcased. And last but not least, I wanna mention about that, you know, that several months ago, when the new owner attended, there's already violation after violation. They started demolition, you know, without, you know, proper permit. And even when the stop work was imposed by the city, there continued to be demolition and construction going on many nights and, and, and weekend, and no one ever, you know, stopped by to reinforce. And right now, that's the thing, I understand that, you know, demolition need a big dumpster right in front of it.
Let's say this to Mr. Duca, there's a cease and desist. He's down there right away, and he'll be down there next week looking, and the next day, and the next day.
I think what happened is they, they got a condition permit. They received the permit right after that happened.
They, they did not have a proper permit.
No, then they went down and saw him, they stopped and gave him permit, and then he went back.
And then they got the permit again, right now, and the dumpster was placed right in front of my house, and there, property, obviously.
That's a.
And it's under tenant, and it's serving as a, and I don't think, well, for so many, you know, I myself have to clean up all the times. So, I really have.
Doorstep.
Although I give them the benefit of the doubt, I have, I have all the reason to really question, but you know, they're honestly about that. So, I just respectfully request that if the board applied to grant a permit, please ensure that, you know, that all of my concern is in your face.
Thank you. Is there anyone else opposed from on the side?
Hi, David Palmer, 72 Royal. I'm undecided, because I'm largely ignorant about what, what the deal is. I don't know if any of you were here during the great Spelmoni wars. Rings a bell? No? Spelmoni ice cream used to be a property, noise all the time. We've been battling with the business neighbors for decades, and which is why I came back. Haven't been here for about a decade. But we had noise from Spelmoni and Dickinson and the Varsity Club. I'd hate to go back to the noise problems, that's why I'm here. I'd like to know what the hours, can we guarantee that the hours of operation would be normal business hours?
We'll get them here before you leave.
And we still, we still don't know what the retail means.
Retail to sell cabinets, kitchen cabinets.
But, but the fellow mentioned to Home Depot and contractors.
No, he, he, he's shipping in, he sells stuff, he ships it in, ships it to the different companies.
So, would have retail traffic, I could, I could.
Retail there, he wants retail too. So, if you wanna go over and buy a set of cabinets from him, you can.
So, there'll be people driving in and out.
Well.
Okay.
I don't know how many people drive in and out, I mean.
Yeah, well, that's what, it was an office before, it wasn't, it wasn't retail, but doesn't sound like a big problem. It's mainly the noise, and it would be, it doesn't sound like a noisy operation. But. This stuff is gonna come in, is it gonna come, we had trouble with delivery trucks with Spelmoni.
It's not building anything there, it's just selling stuff.
Will there be big tractor trailers coming in, delivering this stuff?
Could be in his warehouse, yep.
That wouldn't be at all hours of the night, would it?
No, that's what we put restriction on, that delivery shouldn't pass. They have a certain hours.
I, I hope you will. We had, they used to work all night, trucks would come in, and they have their.
Spelmoni needs to come out right, we need a new reproof.
A new what?
Get the colors right, this Spelmoni.
Well, that's basically it, if you could, if you, I appreciate if you could just make sure there's no noise.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Tom Caulfield, I own the building at 83 Federal Ave. I'm really undecided, I came here this evening just to see what was going on. I didn't know what they were gonna sell, what their hours of operation are, so that's what really I'm here for, to find out. Okay?
We know they're selling kitchen cabinets.
I do not. I didn't know that when I walked in today. But I mean, you know, like I said, my building is right next door, I know we have limited parking there, the hours of operation are really important to me, because I maintain my property pretty good, I wanna make sure no one's parking in my lot after hours. We're usually there from seven to six, and I don't know what his hours of operation are. So, I'd appreciate if I could get that information.
You'll get those right now. Council, what's your hours of operation?
Hours of operation will be Monday through Friday from nine AM to six PM.
Nine to six?
Nine to six, Monday through Friday, Saturday from nine to twelve, closed on Sunday.
Closed Sunday.
So, he's.
For deliveries.
Yeah, he's gonna be getting stuff at nine o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, he's going to be getting stuff at nine o'clock in the morning. The stuff comes off the boat and it comes in the truck, the truck comes to Quincy, right?
Oh, I.
Philip's Warehouse.
The Philip's Warehouse.
Correct.
Right? So then the first truck will arrive at nine o'clock.
Well, I'm talking about.
No, we're talking about hours.
Talking about the showroom. Correct.
Well, I'm curious about.
Now, what are the deliveries? That's what you want to know, deliveries, what time are they going to be?
Sometimes that's.
Well, you don't want them at twelve at night, you don't want them at, at five in the morning either, I mean.
I, I think lead up to the discretion of the board what they want to put in the permit. I mean, I think, I mean, I know the board's very, very experienced. Sometimes it's hard to control exactly what's a delivery.
And, and, well, the guy can go eat breakfast and come back. Delivering, you suppose?
Vermicase.
Vermicase, you know, vermicase, get a pound of bacon, you're out of baked meat.
No? Well, that's what, that's what I think the neighbors are concerned about is the hours of, what's the operation? Not just the retail operation, but in getting goods in.
Well, we can put a, Mr. Duca, what, what, what do you do on deliveries like that? I mean, so you say no deliveries from ten to five AM, ten to six AM?
Most conditions are based on the noise levels that we have in the city.
That's what I mean, what is that?
Which is seven AM to five PM. Actually, noise is regulated between the hours of five PM and seven AM.
So they, they can't really, you're saying a truck can't deliver?
So it doesn't prohibit deliveries, but it certainly prohibits noise from deliveries, which is really the impact to neighborhoods, the backing up, the beeping. And it's closer residential, so seven o'clock, you're able to operate your business. You don't want to tell yours, you know, all the businesses.
Five to seven AM, no delivery.
I would say no deliveries before seven AM is pretty consistent with most of the conditions.
And before eight?
I don't know.
Seven, six, five?
No deliveries after five PM, no deliveries before seven AM. And it's nine, it's nine, it's nine AM on weekends and holidays.
All right.
I don't see why the Yalcon would have any objection there. I think that's all very reasonable.
Yeah, right.
How often is the delivery, since when may I ask, Jack?
It can't be all out.
It is probably not that many, right?
I can't, I can't, I can't imagine. It's a pretty big building.
Yeah, but you fill up and you sell two sets of thirty-seven and they're going to come in and he's not going to have delivery till he gets, he needs fifteen sets of cabinets.
Correct.
He's not going to have a lot of tour time. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else closing on the side? Go ahead.
Quick question, the days of operation?
Monday through Friday, nine AM to six PM.
That's it, no weekends?
Listen, I ain't done. Saturday, nine to twelve. Okay, Sunday closed. No deliveries from seven, five PM to seven AM. No deliveries. We all good?
Sounds great.
All right.
And no manufacturer.
Is there anyone else last call? All are partying, close. I'll be voting in favor.
I'll be voting in favor.
Take the hours of operation and what you're doing, cabinets, I can't see. Ten people going down and doing cabinets that way, I just can't see that.
Okey-dokey. Is there anyone else?
Seventeen eighty-nine. Dong Wei Wu. Sorry.
I was bad.
For variance planning, changing use of office for the attached warehouse, the showroom with attached warehouse, for wholesale retail sales on the premises number seventy-seven Federal Ave. Make a motion to grant the variance with the following conditions. So there'll be no deliveries after five PM to seven AM. And the hours of operation on Monday through Friday, the retail operations is nine AM to six PM. Saturday, nine to twelve, closed on Sunday.
Second is?
Second.
On the motion, seeing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, no more.
Thank you, good night.
Second is, I make the motion. Second is? Aye. Close, aye.